The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening and welcome to the August 30th Westminster City Council Study Session. The council also has a city council special meeting this evening that will start at 7:00 p.m. If study session has not concluded by 7:00 p.m., we will pause, move into the special meeting, and resume the study session at the conclusion of the special meeting. In addition to in-person attendance, the community may also listen remotely by watching the live stream on the City YouTube channel or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. These study sessions are not intended to be interactive with the audience as this is time that is set aside for council to receive information, make inquiries, and provide staff with policy direction. The Agenda section of the city website is the best place to check for details on participating in city council meetings. The web address is www.cityofwestminster.us/adendas. I would now ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would kindly remind folks to either silence or turn off their cell phones. Also, typically what would go next on our study session agenda would be a report from the mayor, city councilors, and city officials. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would be comfortable delaying this till after the presentation to be respectful of our guests' time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am comfortable moving on.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem?
Sounds good, thanks.
Counselor Seymour?
I as well, thank you.
And Counselor Volz?
Yes, ma'am. Sounds good.
Wonderful. Before we started, do you want to recognize that we did just have a birthday on council? Counselor Seymour, happy birthday from all of us. The first presentation and only presentation we have tonight for our study session is in regards to the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport with guests from Jefferson County. We have Jefferson County Commissioner Tracy Kraftthorpe, Jefferson County Manager Don Davis, and Airport Director Paul Anslo. Acting City Manager Dor, if you could please assist us. Well, I guess we have--
Mayor Sykes.
--on the line.
Thank you.
So, or whatever he wants to head it off.
Thank you, Mayor Sykes. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, I'm going to be very brief. I will tell you that I think we can do this portion of this evening's meeting in the next 30 minutes. We've coordinated with our partners at Jefferson County for some very brief comments at the beginning and to begin some dialogue. It is our intention to have this be the beginning of a dialogue. We appreciate them attending this evening, our partners, and appreciate Counselor Scully bringing this to our attention. We want to be clear that this is really a project of Jefferson County. Here in Westminster, we just wanted to keep our council and community informed as to the future of the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, an important enterprise within our region. So I'll stop there and I'll turn it to the presenters from Jefferson County. Thank you, Commissioner Kraftthorpe, for your attendance this evening. And again, council, I think we can conclude this by 7:00 and get to our business as scheduled at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. First and foremost, I wanted to say that I think all of you received a full brief, but in the interest of time, I've kind of narrowed it down so the slides that I'll talk to. But when we're complete, I'll be more than welcome to answer any questions. Next slide. So, Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, formerly Jeffco Airport, was founded in 1960. It's owned and operated by Jefferson County and FAA parlance. They are the sponsor of the airport. We are the third busiest airport in Colorado behind Denver and Centennial, and we're also a reliever for Denver International Airport. We have over 400-based aircraft and over 50 businesses located on the airport, and we do almost $1 billion each year in economic activity. Important for Westminster, hard to determine, you know, what economic comes from the airport goes into Westminster, but obviously Ball Corporation, Ball Aerospace, is on our airport and would not be there without the airport. Next slide. We are a self-supporting enterprise, so we make our money, which is about $5.5 million operating budget each year from user fees, that's our leases for the hangars, that's our building leases. We also get a fuel flowage that we get money from. We have investment income and then grants. Our grants come from both the FAA and C.D. Aeronautics, and over the last 20 years, we've received almost $95 million from the FAA to help keep our airport running. They focus mostly on runways, taxiways, and the infrastructure of that airport. Next slide. Okay, people ask, you know, how does an airport run? So Jefferson County, as I mentioned, is the airport sponsor. They formed the Airport Advisory Board in 2019, and that's a board of individuals from the local area, some tenants, some business owners, some local residents. One of your staff members is on our advisory board, Stephanie Trawler is, and they advise me and ultimately the commissioners on the day-to-day and sort of the vision of what the airport should look like. Recently, and I think it was one of the reasons why we're here, is we formed in 2021, January, the Noise Roundtable, again, which Westminster is a part of, and that's all the locations around the airport. And what that is, is a collaborative effort to come up with some legal, responsible noise mitigation strategies. Now, I run as the airport property management, as I talked about, and the runways and taxiways are my responsibility. So I paint them, I clean them, I pave them, I plow the snow. But once that aircraft takes off and goes, you know, half an inch off the ground, I have no more control over it. So that falls under the federal government, which uses the FAA as their arm to control aviation, and they do the air traffic control. So our air traffic control works for the FAA, they don't work for me, although we are partners, and they do the airport grants. So people always say, you know, "Paul, why can't you tell planes not to fly on Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon or on Mondays?" And I have no authority. It's like trying to say to you all, "Why can't you stop cars driving on, you know, Highway 36 or Highway 70?" You just don't have that authority. Next slide, please. Okay, this is actually from a pilot map. We've added some colors just so the clarity. But we are in the center of the map. That's our Class D airspace. That's a five-mile ring around the airport. As I said, anytime that plane takes off from the runway, they're under control, the air traffic controller. And people say, "Well, why don't they fly to the west?" Well, the west is mountainous terrain, and when there's mountainous terrains, there's a lot of turbulence and there's no safe place to land, so they generally don't go to the west. They don't go to the south because that's Denver, same thing. You got a lot of population, no places to land. Over to the east, you would think, "Oh, that's the great place, there's nothing out east." Well, Denver airspace is out east, and their airspace is right over top of ours. So if you're a pilot and you're in controlled airspace, that's either our Class D or Denver's airspace, if you want to make a turn, if you want to have to climb, if you want to descend, you have to ask permission. So as a pilot who's training or a pilot who's trying to work on their maneuvers, very difficult to do that in controlled airspace. So if you look at the map, the real, the only place you can go is up to the north. So people always complain that I'm directing aircraft to go up to the noise. Again, it's like saying, "Why can't you stop cars going north on, you know, the highway? Why don't you make them go out to the east and around?" I just don't have that authority. Pilots make their choice based on safety and what their mission is for the day. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a picture of our airport with that Class D airspace, so that dotted line is that five-mile circle. You can see our runways are the center. We've got two parallel runways and one cross. And the orange ovals are depiction of what's called the local pattern. People get consumed and confused about what a pattern is, why planes are flying. A local pattern in an airport is the same at every airport across the world. You're going to take off, you're going to go upwind, you're going to turn, you're going to go downwind, you're going to turn to final, and you're going to land. And as you're doing practice landings, that's what you do. That's the local pattern. As you move away from the airport, then you are either on an IFR, which is Instrument Flight Rules, that's what a corporate jet or a commercial jet is, and that's what the thin green line is. And when you take off out of our airport, all of our instrument departures are climbing right turn. Why? Because we have mountains to the west. So immediately, as soon as they break the ground, they hit 400 feet, they start climbing right turn. Same thing coming in, they're always coming in from the southwest, or sorry, southeast, and kind of narrow down the path. The thing to know about those local patterns is, they're fluid. So if you point and go, "Well, that's my house right there, you should not be flying over my house," that pattern is fluid. If there's one plane and there's no wind, it's very easy to keep a nice, clean pattern. You start getting five aircraft in a pattern with an IFR arrival and IFR departure, tower's going to control you and extend your downwind, extend your crosswind. And so, again, these aren't like roads that you have to stay on, those are just basically diagrams of, that's the preferred way you fly. But with the realities of flight, it's very fluid. Next slide. And we can roll right into the next slide. So I'm sure you all, because I get them, and I'm sure Jefferson County Commissioners and County Manager get them also, we get noise complaints about, you know, what we're doing at the airport. It's important to note that we had about 191,000 operations last year, which people say, "It's never been this bad, it's just the worst it's ever been," which is actually not true. If you look back into 2002 and 2004, it was almost the exact same number, it was about 188,000 operations those two years, so very similar. But if you looked all the way back to 1977, we had almost 250,000 operations back then. So we've been a busy airport from the inception. We will always be busy. This is just, it's like more people move to the front range, they want to use the highways, they want to use the Walmarts, they want to use the open space, same thing as they want to use the airports. Next slide, please. Okay, noise complaints in households. Again, it's important to note that people do get upset about noise, and there are things that we are doing at the airport that we can legally do within the rules and regulations of the FAA. But it's also important to note that a lot of times, there's not a lot of people complaining, it's more of a lot of people, a few people complaining a lot. So one of the statistics we like to use, that in 2018, nine households were responsible for 882 complaints, which was over half of our total complaints that year. And if you look down at the chart, Westminster has roughly 44,000 households, individual noise complaints are 556, but only 138 of those households are complaining. So that's 0.31% of your households are making complaints about noise at the airport. So again, we take noise seriously, but I think you need to put it in perspective of what's really happening out there. Next slide, please. Okay, we also talk about noise and growth, and you see that the airport has grown over the last years, but we've had higher years of operations and we kind of follow the economy. But if you go down to the chart here, Westminster in 1990 had 74,000 residents roughly, in 2019, they had 113,000 residents. That's a 52% increase. I always like to use Superior because, you know, they went from 255 residents to 13,000 residents, that's a 5,000% increase. Jefferson County's airport increased 35% over those same years. So it's not the airport's outgrowing the area, the area is growing, all the cities and counties are getting more and more people, and those people, some of them want to fly. But we are not, you know, exceeding what would we consider normal growth. Next slide. Okay, people talk about what are our plans, and Mr. Tripp's mentioned it in his brief introduction. Next slide, please. The airport works off of several documents on how we run the airport. The number one, which is a federally funded, FAA-funded master plan, I'm sure you've all heard the term "master plan." Our 2011 master plan shows, if you look up in the left-hand corner, a lot of blue areas, that's runways, taxiways, and development, that's south of our runway. So if you're familiar with the airport, where plattices and those big broomfield water tanks, that was contemplated in 2011. The other area to the north of the runway is Shelter Air. Shelter Air is our second FBO, and FBO is a gas station service station for planes, and they came in and built, starting in 2019, built an FBO, and so now we just have one, now we have two. So back in 2011, that was being contemplated, that those areas would be developed. Next slide, please. As part of that 2011 master plan, there's actually an airport layout plan that kind of goes into even more detail, and if you look at the colored blocks, it was always expected that we would develop that south side. So again, it's not something that I came here, I became the airport director in 2017, December, I didn't come in and say, "We're going to go to the south side and we're going to develop," and this is a brand-new idea that I thought of. They've been contemplating that, the FAA's known about it, has contemplated it, they're going to fund stuff to help us do that, and so it's not a surprise. Next slide, please. This is from our 2000 master plan. So even way back in 2000, if you look at that red area, that's to the south of the runway, they contemplated developing that side of the airport for aviation all the way back in 2000. Next slide, please. This is from our 1988 master plan. You can kind of see a trend coming. There are no surprises in aviation, things take a long time, it's a long process, but all the way back in 1988, we were contemplating developing on that south side. So with that, that is a real quick down, I know we're very, you know, short on time, but I wanted to give the councilors and the mayors as much time as I could to ask questions. And also, I just wanted to recognize that Don Davis and Tracy Kraftthorpe from Jefferson County coming here and supporting, and we want this to be a partnership, and I appreciate having you out to your session here. And I would likely, I'd love to have you guys out to the airport. We do a great tour. I think it's valuable for people to be on the ground and see what planes are doing, talk to pilots, talk to businesses out there. And if we could set that up, we could bring you all out there and give you a great tour of the airport. So with that, I'm open for questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anslo. Are there any questions or clarification comments from my colleagues? Mayor Protem Demont?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Anslo, for the presentation and for being here tonight. Good information. I happen to grow up in that neighborhood and still live over in that neighborhood, so I've seen some of these developments over the years. One of the things I was hoping you could touch on that I've heard a lot of questions about is the potential for lead coming off of the exhaust of the plane. And I don't know enough about aviation, are those planes know if that's a reality or not, or how you might measure the things that come off the planes that people might be concerned about for health reasons? And that was a part of your presentation, so is that two things. One, I'd like to know if we could get information on that, and two, I would like to take you up on the request to have us come out and visit the site. I think that would be very helpful for us.
It would be great. So fuel, just like fuel at the gas stations regulated by the EPA and the FAA, and aviation fuel is very specific because obviously, if you get bad fuel in your car, you start clunking and you pull off to the side of the road, you call AAA. You can't do that in a plane. So over the last almost two decades, the FAA has been working with companies to get unleaded fuel. We actually use what's called low-lead fuel, so it's not like the leaded fuel back in the day when we had, put them in our car, but there's still lead in that fuel. At Oshkosh, which is the biggest kind of fly-in airshow in the world, a couple months back, they announced that a fuel company, and I just don't have it in front of me, got permission on specific type clearances for engines. So you can't just make a fuel and nine people have nine different planes and those engines will all take that fuel. So they were able to get the certificate for the Lycoming, I think it's like a 300, 400, 405, again, don't, please don't quote me on the numbers. That means those engines are certified to use that fuel, which is unleaded fuel. And as we go forward, those are going to be coming faster and faster. So again, the airport, you all, Jefferson County, we have no control over that whatsoever, but it's market-driven, and I think enough people have heard about it and done it, and again, the FAA has been working with it, that the Lycoming, which is the number-one engine builder for small aircraft, certain types of their engines have been pre-approved now for this fuel. So I think it's coming. I support it. Again, I can't mandate that we sell it, I can't tell private business that you must sell this fuel. It's our two fuel services, our two FBOs are privately owned, and they manage their own business, but I know they support it also. So I think as the next year or so, maybe two to three years comes along, I think that market will shift, and I think that unleaded fuel will be pretty much the norm.
That's good to know that that's in the future. To follow up with that, so is there any way that the FAA looks at how that exhaust comes off and measures at all in the community, or is that just kind of the way planes have always been, or, you know, something that I could go back to those questions with that kind of speaks to those concerns?
I am aware of one study that was just recently published, and I can get that to you, I'll send you a link that talks about it, that there is a link between the lead and the fuel and the thing, but I think at this point, as far as I am aware, the FAA has not really done a study. This was a private city that funded the study and looked into it.
Great. I appreciate, again, you being here tonight and answering our question. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I see that Counselor Volz has a question, but before we go there, it looks like perhaps City Manager Tripp, did you have a comment, or were you wanting to chime in, or am I misreading?
No, Mayor, thank you. I'm just listening and enjoying the presentation here and the good questions. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Volz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Anslo, thank you for being here, the presentation, I appreciate it. Mr. Davis, thank you, and Commissioner Kraftthorpe, thank you for being here. I think it shows a great partnership between Jefferson County and our city, so thank you for that and taking the time and helping us understand these issues. I don't have to, I have to admit, I don't know a lot about the airport yet, I'm learning. Is there a flying school at this airport, and are there complaints around all of those planes that are out flying, doing a flight school?
So we have one helicopter flight school and four fixed-wing flight schools. So yes, roughly 105 aircraft are registered to a flight school, and yes, we do get complaints about a flight school. It's a little bit difficult to say it's a flight school because if I owned a plane and I wanted to defer some of my costs, sometimes I will lease that to the flight school and then students come out and they do the maintenance for you. So it's kind of a trade-off. So that plane could be registered to me, it could be registered, and by the way, I don't own a plane. Jefferson County doesn't pay me enough money.
Did you hear my commissioner?
Yeah.
Benefit of those listening at home, there were some shocked expressions from the audience.
So that plane could be registered to me, it could also be registered to the flight school, it just depends on the LLCs that sometimes own it. And it may be a student that comes into that flight school, goes out with an instructor and does their maneuvers, and when you're a student, it's like having a final exam every time you go fly. You have a curriculum, you have to perform those maneuvers. Sometimes a new maneuver is introduced, the next time you have to be able to do it, and then the third time you have to do it perfectly. So you're always moving forward. So those maneuvers that people talk about may be a flight school person going through those maneuvers, which are FAA-mandated. Or if I own the plane, I have to fly so many landings, so many hours, so many hours at night, so many landings at night, and so on and so on. So again, it may be me taking my own plane out and doing those maneuvers so that I can stay current and actually legally fly my plane. And it could be anywhere in between. It could be people jumping in a plane, flying out somewhere, and they call it the $100 hamburger, they land at an airport, they go in, they have lunch, they, you know, they have that, and then they fly back to our airport and vice versa.
So as the number of aircraft coming in and out of that airport increase, is there ever a thought, well, first of all, let me ask you a question first. Do we time those schools, those flights with the students to be less invasive on the people around, in the neighborhoods around? Do we contemplate that when we say, "Here's the time they fly"?
We do. So when I took over in December of 2017, one of the first meetings I had was a trustee from Superior, and she called me up and says, "No one will talk to me." I said, "I'll talk to you, come, come see me." So she came out to the airport, and she says, "I've been trying to talk about noise and operations for three years, no one will talk to me." So I went and actually met and talked just like this to their city council. We had an open house at the airport, we went back and forth several times, and out of that, we created, at the time, we called it the Noise Task Force. And it was business professionals, flight schools, airport advisory, and air traffic controllers all kind of come together and saying, "What can we do?" So it's, again, it's like saying, "Well, why is your Harley, you know, leaving your driveway at 4:30 in the morning for you to go to work? I don't want that, stop it. Why can't?" But what we can do is there are procedures and maneuvers that the flight schools and all pilots can do, not just the flight schools. And we created a list, and it was actually, it's in your brief, so if you get a chance, go back and look at it. And what those are is voluntary, because again, I don't have any authority to mandate procedures or time or anything like that, but voluntary procedures that flight schools can follow that would alleviate some of the noise. And our own air traffic controller stated at a previous roundtable meeting that, in her opinion, she'd been in air traffic control 20-plus years, that about 95% of all the people are following that. Now again, we get pilots from other airports to come in, so not everyone may be following us. The other thing is, they actually instituted a curfew at 10:00 p.m. So it's a little hard in the summer because you have to fly at night to maintain your currency, so when, you know, it doesn't get dark till 9:00 or 9:15, it's almost impossible, but especially during the winter. But that was another step that we did, that was a voluntary step that the flight school set, and I had a meeting with them, I guess it was about two weeks ago, and their less than 1% of their operations are after 10:00 p.m. So again, I think, you know, those procedures are working.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Sure.
We have roughly five minutes before our city council meeting will begin. I wanted to see, I know we have two other guests in attendance. Mr. Davis or Commissioner Kraftthorpe, did either of you want to speak or add to the presentation? Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Anslo, for attending this meeting and doing the study session tonight. It was a personal ask, and I really appreciate your time and commitment to our community. And I have heard these presentations and worked with you a great deal in the last few months, so I appreciate all the time you have given me. And council, I would recommend that we do the tour. The tour is very enlightening, and it's kind of fun to go see the airport, so, just saying. I have some questions, and they're questions I actually know the answers to, but I feel like the residents would benefit from hearing them in a different capacity. So one of them is, there was a recommendation to put mufflers onto some of the planes to mitigate the sound, and we had an entire presentation on mufflers and what that would do and how it would work, and I was wondering if you could quickly touch on that.
Yes, ma'am. So Embry-Riddle, about 10 years ago, same thing, they're trying to reduce noise. A manufacturer in Germany created a muffler, it was an external part that you put on the aircraft, they reduced it, I think by 10 decibels, which is fairly significant. They did thousands of hours of training on the ground, they got the thumbs up from the engineers, FAA said it was okay, they actually started flying the planes, and they started having, one of the maneuvers you do when you fly is you pull the power back and you assume you lose an engine, you have to go through certain procedures, and then you put the engine forward and you fly away. The problem was with those mufflers, they were finding a reduced response time in that engine, so there was a lag. In aviation, you just can't have that. And so they started working with the engineers, and eventually they had two engine failures. So they went through that maneuver, they pulled to low power, they went through their procedures, and they went to full throttle and the engine stalled. Now, they do that over the runway on purpose, just in case this happens, but they pulled those mufflers off. Even if they worked, and they obviously didn't, Embry-Riddle's in Florida, which is at sea level, we're at 5,000 feet. So it's called density altitude, and it's a mathematical equation, talks about temperature, humidity, a couple other things that goes in, and on a hot summer day, our air at our airport's level ground seems like it's at 9,000 feet. So those planes don't perform very well. So in Florida, they're at, you know, 500 feet off the ground and they can take off, and they have that little bit of a margin of extra power. One of the things that we get a lot of complaints about, especially in the summer, is these planes aren't climbing out very fast. Well, one of our pilots at our last meeting says, "When you're a student pilot, you put that throttle full forward and you basically leave it there until the flight's over. You're not really tweaking it and coasting and all that stuff, because at our altitude, you need that power." So we would have certainly looked into that and been willing to do it, but it just didn't seem like it was a viable option for our airport at the altitude, and ultimately it was a failed experiment.
And so it puts at risk safety.
Yes.
And safety is the number-one concern here.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then another question I had, you mentioned altitude. We had a lot of conversation about the altitude that planes are required to fly at over our community and how many residents in, will say that they don't feel the planes are flying at that altitude. Can you address that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. So we get a lot of those complaints, and the general rule, and there's, because it's the federal government, the FAA, there's lots of sub-rules, but the general rule is an aircraft has to maintain 1,000 feet over congested area. So if you are way out to the east over Kansas, you could go lower, down to 500 feet, but generally planes want to fly at 1,000 feet or above because to a plane, altitude is safety. If you lose that engine, you can turn, find a landing, set up those procedures and things. So the other caveat to that is during landing and/or takeoff. So especially for Rock Creek, which is less than, you know, about 1.1, 1.2 miles off for Rock Creek, which is less than, you know, about a 1.1, 1.2 miles off the end of our runway on a hot summer day, that aircraft's climbing out as fast as it can and it just doesn't have the power to get up to 1,000 feet before it's over Rock Creek. Trust me, that pilot wants to get up there. They don't want to be low. It's just the nature of the plane they're flying with the altitude and the temperature that we have.
So a comment that I heard this weekend from a resident was, um, the resident felt that the planes, um, specifically fly over this individual's home, targeting the home. We had a conversation about that when we did our tour. Is that actually possible?
It's, I guess theoretically it's possible, but when you're flying a plane, your number one concern is safety. And the other thing that I would like to offer is that the flight schools has offered up what they call discovery flights. So love to get you guys out to an airport, get you into the plane for about 25 minutes, no cost to you all. Because again, when you hear the pilot talking to the radio, moving throttles, switching dial, I flew for 21 years, I was a helicopter pilot for the Marine Corps, you don't have time to go, oh, I need to go over Catherine's house and, uh, you know, give her a little buzz. You're worried about your safety, you're worried about the people who you are flying with. Um, it's just not feasible. They are busy and we had a discussion with the flight schools and they're certified flight instructors, CFIs or professionals, they're going to do a good job. So it's, I'm not saying it's not, it's theoretically possible, but very highly unlikely.
Okay. I know I'm out of time. Yeah. So that's great. Thank you for letting us know that you have more questions. Um, Mr. Anslo, I appreciate, um, this portion of the study session. Um, we are going to move into the special city council meeting at this time. Therefore, the presentation will be paused. Um, at the adjournment of the special meeting, we will resume the study session and complete this presentation. So Counselor Scully can ask and any other colleagues that have questions and, um, have, have further questions. So, um, please hang tight.
I will.
This is an issue that many of our residents, um, ask us about or are concerned about. And so it's very helpful to hear this from you. All right.
Thank you.
All right. The time is 7:01 and we are now convening as Westminster City Council for a special council meeting. Um, we've already done a pledge of allegiance earlier, um, during our study session, but I will ask City Clerk Parker to please lead us in roll call.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Demont.
Present.
Mayor Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Vols.
Here.
Um, the purpose of our special council meeting tonight is to go over some ballot initiatives for the November ballot. The first item before us is item B. This is Counselors' Bill number 32. Can I get a motion?
Uh huh.
I believe we need to read it into the.
Sorry.
Actually, maybe I can't do that. Somebody else. Okay. Um, so you withdraw the, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill number 32, placing questions on the November 2021 election ballot to amend the charter.
Counselor Vols?
A second to motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments or concerns on this item from my colleagues? Um, and I just want to let you all know, unfortunately, um, I don't have the display of who's up, so I'm going to have to be looking around. So if I miss you, please let me know. Seeing no questions, comments or concerns, this is.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Counselors' Bill number 32 passes on second reading with a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is Resolution number 30. Is there a motion from one of my colleagues?
May I move?
Uh, Counselor Scully.
I move to adopt Resolution number 30, placing questions on the November 2021 ballot, establishing a tax on the sale of retail marijuana and allowing the operation of retail marijuana businesses.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Second.
There is a, um, motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions or concerns on this item? Counselor Smith.
Uh, this is in alignment with, I will be voting no. This is in alignment with, uh, our study session a couple of weeks ago. I feel like we're inundating, uh, the voters towards, uh, having so much on the ballots. Uh, this is one of them that I don't feel that we need at this time.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, being consistent also in the discussion that I had during the study session too. Um, this is a, uh, personal and principal objection to the sale of marijuana in our city. So I will also be voting no.
Thank you for those comments. Mayor Protem Demont?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a quick question for staff. Um, so I'm assuming that a lot of the uses for the tax are dictated by state law as far as education to avoid use of minors. But there's, on the section that says other city expenses, I'm curious, um, is there any limit to what those funds could be used for if this passes and we end up using this sort of tax?
City Manager Trip, who would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, Larry Dorr and Chris Linds, you're going to handle these responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorr?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Uh, Mayor Protem, any lawful purpose that is described as sort of any other expenditure could be authorized for the use of these funds. Of course, all appropriations are ultimately authorized by the city council and would be under your purview and so forth. So, uh, in essence, any, any lawful purpose, but of course, there would be primary costs to, uh, regulate the purchase and sale of marijuana in our city. And that would be, uh, what staff would recommend the first, uh, dollars of revenue be used for. And then beyond that, it would be to the purview of the city council.
Great. And I guess the, the follow-up to that is my understanding of this is if this were to go to the voters, then this, um, we'd have to do an ordinance in order to actually, um, regulate or authorize the sale of marijuana in the city. So at that point, if that were to be the direction that we go, could that ordinance also act as a control as to what those tax revenues would be spent on as a city?
Well, I think the city attorney might want to go ahead and address that. I think he'll probably guide you. That is indeed within your, your purview and control.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Uh, Dave Frankel, city attorney. And, and yes, Mayor Protem Demont, I believe that the regulatory steps that would be undertaken by city council would be to amend the code. Right now, the Westminster Municipal Code bans marijuana-related businesses within our city. So if the council were to enact, um, permissive uses for marijuana in the city and business licensure, that sort of thing, first they'd have to repeal the, uh, sections with ban it and that, uh, new section could then address what types of marijuana regulations should be enacted by city council. And yes, the, the funding can absolutely be addressed by city council at that time.
Great. Um, that answers all my questions that I've heard some of these questions in the community. And so I wanted to go on the record, um, on a couple of things. One, I will be supporting this. I actually, um, pushed to have this come back. And where this came up was last year, um, during our, our budget retreat, especially in a time where we weren't sure how things were going to shake out with COVID. We had talked about the potential of using, uh, marijuana sales as a revenue source. Um, and so people understand this isn't necessarily something that the city does have to put out to the voters. However, I think it's a question that should be asked of voters. Um, and so I, I think the proper path in my mind is for this to go to the voters and know whether or not the citizens of Westminster want to see the sales of marijuana inside their city. And so that's kind of why this is in front of us. And I will be supporting it because I think at the end of the day, this decision should be made by the people who live in the city, not the city council.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Protem. Are there any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Resolution number 30 is adopted on a vote of four to two.
The next item before us is Resolution number 31. Counselor Scully, do you want to complete?
I do, ma'am. Um, I move to adopt Resolution number 31, placing a question on the November 2021 ballot regarding an increase in the public safety sales in Ustah.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Resolution number 31 is adopted on a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is Resolution number 32. Can I get a motion, Counselor Scully?
I move to adopt Resolution number 32, placing a question on the November 2021 ballot regarding the continuation of the parks, open space and trails post-tax.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions or concerns on this? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Uh, along with the study session a few weeks ago, I, I was a no vote on this moving forward. Um, I think we're too far in advance to truly understand what we'll be using these funds on, so I will be a no vote.
Um, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I thought long and hard about this too, and I knew, I know that we're, um, taking proactive action, uh, regarding our expiration of this tax too. But with the limited amount of land that we have available before buildout, we need to be, um, very nimble in, in the money that we have to acquire any spaces that come available to us. So I think this will give us some room from that standpoint. And our residents have told us, um, um, biannual survey after biannual survey, how important open space and trails are to their wellbeing. And in 2020, it absolutely proved that. So I'll be a yes vote.
Uh, thank you. And, um, I also want to weigh in on this. This is an issue that, um, I brought forward along with Counselor Vols and, um, have enjoyed the support of majority of council on doing this because as, um, Counselor Seymour rightly pointed out, um, our parks and our open spaces went from being amenities, um, in previous years to necessities to our residents. Um, Westminster is reaching buildout. Um, and by allowing bonding, it allows us to purchase some critical, um, prioritized parcels when they become available, um, and allows us to move swiftly, um, to protect something that our, our community members really enjoy. Um, so with that, I will be joining my colleagues in voting yes on this item. Um, and I apologize, Mayor Protem, I did not see your light on.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to add on to this. Um, I agree with everything that Counselor Seymour and Mayor Sights stated as far as why this is important. The other thing I just want to point out to the public and thank my colleagues, this was a work in progress. I don't think at first when this came up, there was a unanimous support as far as how we do this. And I think that we worked hard to come up with something that the majority of council is comfortable with. So pleased to support this tonight.
Thank you so much for those comments. This is a roll call vote. Oh, my apologies. Oh, ready. Okay, she's ready to vote.
I'm ready to go. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Resolution number 32 is adopted on a vote of five to one.
The final item on tonight's, um, special council meeting is Resolution number 33. Counselor Scully?
I move to adopt Resolution number 33, placing a question on the November 2021 ballot regarding the creation of a commission to further explore charter amendments providing for the election of city councilors from geographic wards.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions or concerns on this item? Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that this actually, this concept was, has been talked about for a long time. When I first came on council, one of my first meetings with a council member was Counselor Demont or Mayor Protem Demont. And he asked me, he said, will you consider this? And we looked at it, we both, uh, talked about it at length. Uh, I'll be supporting this tonight. I think it makes a lot of sense in our city to have a mix of wards and at large. And we don't know yet how that will specifically come down, but I will vote for this because I think it takes us a step farther in that direction. So I want to thank, um, Mayor Protem Demont because we did have a good conversation and kind of led us down the path of, of working together on this issue. So thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Um, I was going to add to that. I mean, last year we talked about this. I think this is another one of those things that, um, since I've been involved, I've been hearing the question. And I think this is obviously something the voters are going to have to decide whether or not that's how they want their representation to be selected. Um, so I appreciate the support of my colleagues in this. I know last year we talked about putting this on the ballot and, um, the majority feel was, it was the wrong year for COVID. Um, so I appreciate the fact that when I asked if we could move this to next year and at least make the commitment to put it on the ballot, everybody agreed on that and that's what brings us here tonight. So I look forward to supporting this because I think it's time for the, the residents to see whether or not they want to move this direction in selecting their representation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for those comments. I'm also going to be supporting this move tonight. Um, whenever we amend our charter, um, particularly when it comes to how our residents are represented by their elected body, um, it is important that we're intentional and thoughtful and we follow best practices and understand the implications of any changes. Um, this will, this commission will have a, um, if passed, an important charge, um, to make sure that we are doing a good job of figuring out how to establish, um, wards and commissions. So, um, with, with that said, I will be also joining and supporting this tonight. This is a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Resolution number 33 is adopted with a vote of six to zero.
And this adjourns our special council meeting. My apologies to the Jeffco Commissioners, County Manager and our representative, um, from the airport. For, we appreciate you waiting, but, uh, Counselor Scully did make it clear she had some additional questions for you. Um, so we can welcome you back to, uh, the podium, Mr. Anslo.
And I, they're short questions and only two.
No worries.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is the growth of the airport. Um, I know that it's been in the plans for many years. Is it runways? Is it more, um, hangars? What kind of growth are we looking at?
So we, there was a contemplation of an extra runway, um, in one of the previous master plans. Operationally, it doesn't make sense, so I do not see that happening. Um, if you're familiar with the airport and where Pilatus is and then Sims Road, um, on the west of Sims Road, there's actually 170 acres of what's designated by the FAA as aeronautical land. Um, that land will be developed and most likely, uh, to develop it, there'll have to be a taxiway going from our current runway system. Uh, Sims will have to be relocated and that taxiway will go out into that 170 acres. And as part of that, um, you can look at the master plan, kind of shows a big picture, but you can also look at, uh, what the Airport Advisory Board did in our developmental framework. They kind of took those parcels of land and put highest and best use to them. Um, and then I'm sure many of you have heard of our strategic business plan. Um, and that strategic business plan took that one step further and kind of really laid out some of the proper, uh, acreage required for minimum standards, our FAA standards. And so you would see what we would call kind of a mix. Obviously, there's going to be some taxiway and some ramps, some hangar, some different types of development. But ultimately, we're market driven. Um, I always like to use the term spaceport or drone port, right? Because you hear them, but you don't really know what they're going to be. And the FAA is very careful when they give you grants that we sign grant, actually the county commissioner signed grant assurances. And we can't discriminate against certain types of business. So when people say, well, just tell us you'll never let another flight school and we'll be happy. Legally, I can't do that. Now, what I can do and what's really important about the strategic business plan, why are we pushing that forward, is it allows us to shape the marketplace. So that if a flight school approached me, let's just say Embry-Riddle says, we want to bring 100 planes and a campus over there and we want to put it right here. If they did that today, I would be hard pressed to say no. And with, uh, Jefferson County would be sued and could be sued by both that, uh, firm and the FAA. What I can do with the strategic business plan is say, you know, we really want to set this land aside for higher and better use. And your flight school may fit back in this far, far corner, but we won't be developed back there for another 10 years. Um, and it allows us to basically shape that marketplace for the highest and best use. One of the things about that airport is, um, they kind of did whoever came first. They didn't really have a good planning, um, over the years. And so we've got smaller, less, uh, appropriate hangars right next to our biggest runway, which is where you would want your bigger planes and your bigger hangars. And we've got bigger hangars farther away. Again, it's almost kind of backwards. So, um, does that answer your question?
It absolutely does. You actually answered it a little bit more, which I appreciate. Um, and it, it kind of led to another question, um, which I'm still trying to formulate in my head. So I may come back to it if I can put it together. Um, the other question on my list here is, so the runways go in certain directions. We know the mountains are in one direction. We know the east is in another direction. Um, We know the mountains are in one direction, and we know the east is in another direction. What does it take to change those directions? And if we could, would it be a good idea?
So the runways, when they are built, they are built basically on what's called the favorable winds. In aviation, you always want to fly into a headwind. So the FAA and the Airport Authority back in the day studied for, you know, Farmer's Almanac, or whatever they did in the '60s, and they said the prevailing winds are this. And they laid those runways out. Air traffic control with safety as their primary goal sets the runway in use. So the runways, to move them, would cost, you know, hundreds of million dollars. That's just not going to happen. To change those runways, or, you know, to change the landing direction, is based on the wind. And the FAA, through their air traffic controllers, are always going to direct the airport, the planes into the prevailing wind. Now, sometimes there's a crosswind, and that's why we have that one short crosswind thing, because the bigger the plane, you can land with a bigger crosswind. You have more capability. Smaller planes don't have that, and so on a crosswind, they may not be able to land. So as a safety factor, they put that crosswind runway in. And so you'll see occasionally, during our tour, we were talking about, "That plane looks odd." And it was like, "Oh, because it took off from our crosswind line because of the way the wind stresses." But we have no authority over it. No one in Jefferson County has authority over it. The air traffic control supervisor and their air traffic controllers up in the cab control that 100% and would never change it other than for ultimate safety.
I can think of a million more questions, but...
I'm here all night.
I appreciate the questions you have answered. I would like a discovery flight personally, just to see what that feels like and what pilots see at those altitudes, so I may take you up on that. And I would like to invite the residents of Westminster to reach out to Mr. Anzlo and the airport for tours. I think it's very enlightening, and it helps understanding of the airport and its presence in our community. So I appreciate your time tonight and for allowing us to ask questions.
My pleasure. I will also throw out that now that we're post-COVID, before COVID hit, we would go out to residents' houses, and we would sit with them on their back patio and explain that when a plane is flying over, that it's not at 200 feet, it's actually about 1,000 feet. Or, "Why is he turning there?" And actually kind of make them understand. And we had very good success with that prior to COVID. And I've actually offered that up to a couple people now that we're post-COVID. Haven't been taken up on it yet, but if you have constituents that want me to come out and my staff to come out, we'll sit with them and explain what's, you know, we always hear, "Why is he flying over my house?" We'll be able to explain it in the best manner that we can. So for anyone who's listening, we have that as an option also.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anzlo. I actually have just a couple of questions. You showed us a chart with the number of flights per year, and I think it started in 1970 was the beginning of that. And in those early years, you actually had even more flights than you have currently. But over the last decade, there's been quite a fluctuation in the number of flights. Do you have any explanation for why there were so, there were less operations maybe in the 10 previous years?
Yes, ma'am. So the '70s was what they called the heyday of general aviation. Planes were cheap, gas was cheap, maintenance was cheap. So if you had, you know, a couple thousand dollars, you and a couple friends could get. So that's why, when you look at the '70s, and there's a lot of planes that are still flying that were built in the '70s, there are more planes built in the '70s that are still flying today because the engine technology is basically, and the wing technology is the same. Aviation follows the economy. So if you look back, and I don't know if they can go back and find that slide or not...
It would be helpful.
So Austin, if you can hook me up and go back to the operation slide while he's trying to find that. We follow, aviation follows the economy. So if you look at like 2008, we were pretty strong. 2009, we went down. 2010. And then it takes a while to come back because, obviously, you know, you've got your house, your food, you know, your essentials. A lot of times, flying is not an essential. The difference in today's economy and why aviation is exploding right now is because of the shortage of pilots. U.S. pilots are forced to retire at 65. So that number, every day they drop off, I think the number's 2,000, again, don't quote me on those numbers, I can look them up if you want, but every day that happens, just those pilots are going out the door. And there's only one way to get those pilots, and that's for those to go through that flight training and go through those flight schools to learn. And so they are predicting 100,000 pilot shortage by 2030. That means our flights to Hawaii, or, you know, wherever we're all going, Cancun, they're not going to have pilots to do that. So route shortages are going to start happening. So you look at the issues that are going on with public education in colleges, and the cost, and the people who are getting degrees at hundreds of thousands of dollars and then can't find a job. One of our flight schools, but all of our flight schools, one of them is very tuned into Denver State. And they go to class at Denver, they come fly, and they have a job waiting for them at an airline the day they finish their prerequisites. So it's inexpensive, it's not inexpensive. It's a lot cheaper than college, and you have a guaranteed job. And so a lot of young people are looking, a lot of old people, I know people who are in their 40s and stuff are going, "I could go and get an airline job, you know, spend two years training and have 15 or 20 years of a great job, traveling around the world, making fantastic money." So they're doing career changes, as I'm sure all of you have seen with career changes in different businesses. So we are in a very unique situation where that's going to happen. Ah, there he goes, he found him. So yeah, if you look at, hardly see the numbers, but there in the, you know, 2010, 2011 timeframe, we kind of bottomed out, and then we've just been slowly growing at about 8% to 12% per year since then. And then you kind of look at, you know, in the '70s, when we had the gas crunch, and so then the numbers started going down again.
Well, I appreciate this. And, you know, it helps also explain why folks who maybe have lived in this neighborhood for a decade feel like it's increased because it has. But it shows that over the timeline of the airport, it's not dramatically different than probably the mean. I really appreciate that you've spent a lot of time tonight discussing authority and accountability and kind of divvying up what you're accountable for and the authority you have versus other agencies. This is an issue, I think all of my colleagues will agree, that when we're at the door or at community forums, we hear about. And people are passionate about it. It's their homes, right? This is where they raise their kids, this is where they spend their time. This is where they go for their respite. And so these can be passionate conversations. But I think the more that we hear from each other, understand both the public value that we get from the airport and the public impact that we have on residents, we can all do our part to try to make sure communicating those concerns are heard and getting to the appropriate authorities and not taking more than is our charge or what we, you know, there's very limited what we can do. But we are happy to have you here to educate us as local electeds, be that liaison, and then to also help facilitate conversations for you at the appropriate level. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming. It would be helpful for me in the future. I don't expect you to have this data available right now, but how many businesses in the region rely on the airport for their supply chain or for their operations, that they rely on that? And if we know how many employees are employed by them?
So C.D. Aeronautics does a report, the one slide kind of had a little respite from that, and it goes into a little bit of depth. I don't know if it's the depth that you were looking, but it does talk about on-airport jobs and the secondary jobs and sort of all that that follows along, and I can send you that in a link.
It caught my interest when you mentioned that Ball Aerospace has let you know that their location here was connected to the airport, and I didn't realize it was that direct of a connection to the airport, which is my ignorance. So I was wondering if that is a tale that, you know, that is true with other large corporations like that. So just wanted to learn more. But I appreciate this, and I would ask any residents that are listening, please always feel free. I know there were some folks who wanted to present as community members tonight, and that's not how study sessions are structured. Every single council meeting, we do have a time for resident comments. Anyone who's listening that wants to come and have their opinions for that period of time. Thank you, Mr. Anzlo. Are there any other comments or questions from the colleagues? Seeing none, we appreciate you coming out tonight and appreciate the conversation, Mr. Davis. It looks like you moved towards the front. Were you wanting to say a few words, or were you...
No, ma'am, I'll call it covered. It was the shortage of pilots in the background. That's also economically driven. You know, when there's hundreds of thousands, or there's a forecast of hundreds of thousands of short pilots, some of those business owners that own those pilot schools will tell you that they used to be mechanics. They built their businesses from the ground up, and now they're reaching that opportunity to really get back what they've invested into that business. So they've got hundreds of students, each of the schools, and the demand for those students is growing. And so the demand across the country. I can also tell you, Paul can tell you this, too, living around various parts of the country, general aviation airports are all challenged with encroachment and the issues of growing together with the community. There's always noise, and there's always those challenges. So, you know, responsible growth on the front range is a challenge that we're going to continue to see, you know, for the future. Everybody sees that here in the front range. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Paul. This is a great opportunity. I would absolutely encourage you to come out to the airport and walk the grounds and visit some of the businesses, the corporate headquarters that count on those corporate flights to visit some of their different sites and so forth. It's really an amazing place and a beautiful airport.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Seeing no other comments or questions, we now will go back to the beginning of the agenda. Reports from the mayor. I do just want to recognize, we have in the audience tonight Ms. Juliette Abdell, and we did have the State of the City with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce this week. It was a great event. They did a wonderful job hosting it, and we were happy to report on both what has happened in the city this last year and where we are headed. Next, I would, and the last thing I'd like to mention is, we did have the graduation for our very first civics academy. It was a wonderful event. I was joined by most of council that could attend to celebrate these residents that went through an eight-week program, 35 hours of learning what it takes to run the city, learning about the dedication of our employees. And to a person, they raved about it. The only suggestion I heard was that they wished it was even longer. So, and some were wanting to have follow-up tours of additional city facilities. Are there any comments or reports from my colleagues? Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real briefly, today was the board meeting for the Butterfly Pavilion. I'd say, since Mr. Tennyson, who is the head of the Butterfly Pavilion, came and gave you guys an update, there was not anything new. They just continued to improve business as they come out of COVID. Exciting things going on in their capital campaign for their new facility improvement field. So this is a good meeting, but I wouldn't say there was any new information that Mr. Tennyson didn't share with you all.
Thank you for that report. And for anyone who gets the Washington Post, the Butterfly Pavilion was highlighted in it for their work to help save coral, which is dying off. There's a disease off the coast of Florida. So it was great to see the work of our locals to try to help combat that. Next up, I see Counselor Vols.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to thank staff for their work on the Citizens Academy. It was a wonderful event and lots of positive feedback. So Clerk's Office, I know Abby Fitch was very involved, and Cody Erb was very involved, and all of our department heads and all of your work. I appreciate that. The feedback is very positive, so thank you for that. We even had some folks saying they're going to come to our budget sessions. I think that says a lot. Mr. Dory, you must have done a really good job on that. So thank you, everyone, for that. I think it's very positive, and I was glad we were included at least a little bit in it, and I appreciate that and all the effort that went into it. Also, the State of the City was a very successful event, and we had Juliette Abdell from the Westminster Chamber here. Thank you for your work on that. You did a fantastic job. It was a great event. Mayor, wonderful speech. And I like this year, you included the kind of questions afterwards and more of a kind of discussion. I thought that was really neat. So I would, I'd like to see that in the future, but whatever happens, happens. Thank you for that. And also, I want to thank staff. I know the city attorney's office were very involved, and Chris Lindsay's office is very involved. That was a heavy lift on the ballot initiatives, on the language we approved tonight. And I know we went back and forth, and I think we have really good language because we did all discuss it. We had really tremendous discussions in depth, talking about how we can make it better. So I want to thank staff, both the city attorney's office and the city attorney, and Mr. Lindsay and his staff, and everyone else who contributed. It was a heavy lift to get that done in time, so thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Wednesday was one of those busy days, so I took the opportunity to join State of the City at the beginning part, but I also had the great honor to attend the Public Works and Utilities Celebration and wrap-up of the, of course, I can't pronounce it right there without seeing, the high-service pump station at Semper's Barbecue. I want to thank Julie Kaler for all the work that she put into that. Great opportunity to tour that new facility to help provide steady water stream out of that plant to our residents, and then the backup redundancy that was placed in that building. So it was great to meet the contractors that take great pride in their work and doing work for our city and hear the comments about how staff and the contractors worked collaboratively to bring that project to fruition.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. Are there any other comments or reports? I'm sorry, Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, attended the State of the City. Fabulous job, Ms. Juliette Abdell, thank you very much. Also, the Citizens Academy, great success and just amazing to see that lifted. I also attended the funeral services for former Officer Von Pepper, and he was a great contributor to our community. We had a coffee shop and service to our city for so many years, and our city owes his family a great deal of debt, and I just wanted to acknowledge his passing and that we're very sad for his family. And then also, last week, we had a Jeff West Community Forum candidate presentation as well. So those are starting, so I'll be looking for them in the community. It's a great opportunity to get to know your potential elected.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other comments or questions, there is a report, is there a report from the city official?